Welcome to the May 27th meeting of the Easton Planning and Zoning Board. This is, as you can tell, a hybrid meeting. The hybrid meeting will be conducted both in person and remotely over Zoom. Attendance by the planning board members may be in person or over Zoom. All, both types of attendance shall count toward forum. This meeting is being broadcast live and recorded on eCap. To use Zoom, you'll need to use the link on the agenda or download the Zoom application. You'll need the webinar ID to join by phone only. While conducting hybrid meetings, we will endeavor to keep meeting operations as close to standard procedures as possible. However, use of the remote platform will necessitate some additional meeting protocols. One, while the board members or commissioners and applicants will be on video and audio, public participants invited to speak by the chair will be in person on video or, and/or audio. Public participants joining by Zoom will be muted and with no video feed from them. Public lines will be muted throughout the meeting. Two, for general meetings, not hearings, and only for items under which the chair solicits public comment, members of the public participating in the Zoom meeting may submit a written question via text chat, provided they include their full name and address for the record. Members preferring to submit questions in writing via email may do so at dped@easton.ma.us. The chair reserves the right to respond to questions during the live meeting but may limit the time for such activities. Any questions not addressed in the meeting may be answered afterwards via email and will be incorporated into the minutes of the meeting for the public record. Three, all votes will be by roll call. Four, for public hearings during the public testimony portion of the meeting, members of the public joining via Zoom may be recognized by using the raise hand function. We don't have any public hearings tonight, so I'm going to skip the rest of that one. Five, as in any public hearing, testimony offered must be related to the hearing being held. Off-topic commentary will not be tolerated. Number six, when all business indicated on the agenda has been completed, the members will vote to adjourn. We will get tonight's meeting started by a roll call. Ketum?
Hi, here.
Wolf?
Here.
Weeks?
Here.
Kid?
Here.
And Stetson is here as well. All right, well, we're jumping right into the meeting minutes from the May 12th meeting. Has anyone had a chance to take a look at them?
Yep.
Will accept the motion.
Good.
Motion to approve minutes, May 12th.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Ketum?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. All right, next up, we have two ZBA requests for comments. The first is a special permit at 20 Leisure Lane. Stephanie?
Okay, this is for a special permit for a home occupation where the occupation or the business that's being conducted will have two or more employees that are non-residents or up to two employees that are non-residents of the property. So if you have a home occupation and you have nobody coming to the house, no customers, no clients, and you only employ people who either live in the house or are related to you living in the house, then you can do that by right. But if you have more than two employees that are not residents, you need a special permit. And I'm sorry, and it's up to two additional employees. So someone asked earlier what the business is. This is a very light manufacturing. It's assemblage, and as I understand it, it's assembly of some type of motorcycle accessory.
Okay. Board members, what do we think?
Do you have any more details about the motorcycle assembly? If it's electronic or if there's any cleaning involved or solvents?
There, according to the building inspector, it's very clean and light. There was no cleaning or solvents or heavy machinery that's being used. All the materials are packaged and then shipped off-site. There, again, there was no one coming to the house.
All right, what do we think here? Any ideas, thoughts, questions, motions?
So this would be a motion to?
Recommend.
Recommend. A motion to recommend the special permit for 20 Leisure Lane. Wolf?
Ketum, second.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Ketum? Wolf?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
And Kid?
Aye.
Stetsons and I as well. All right, next up is the variance at 40 Bristol Drive. Stephanie?
So this is a request to allow a reduction in the setback requirement, the year rear yard setback. Page. The rear yard setback is 40 feet. They want to reduce that to 11 feet. And the reasoning for that is that they can't locate the building in a size that makes sense without some type of setback. Very, I'm sorry, variance. The front yard has a 40-yard setback because I was looking at the plans and when I was talking with the applicant, when, you know, we had a conversation about this, the front yard setback is, like I said, 40 feet. You have the parking already out front, but, you know, we'd like to see more parking out back, but if you do that, then you need a front yard variance. So, and I believe you have the plan, Suzanne. I don't, I'm not going to be able to get the plans up here. So the applicant has provided a?
There is, there is this.
Yep.
Right, I don't have it.
It was one of the last pages. Yeah, Exhibit A.
Mm-hmm.
Figure number one.
That would help me explain it better.
A little bit bigger.
All right, so what you have?
Yeah, it's about the same.
Just a little bit bigger.
That's not it, actually.
Oh, no?
This one, it's the last page. So if you see Figure 3, Concept Plan B, this shows how it could meet the setback, but you'd have this long, skinny building that really would not work for the purpose and probably not for very many purposes. But it would comply with both the setback requirements. And then what they're proposing is on Concept Plan A, where they have a more uniform rectangular building, but they have that setback requirement. Now, the, one of the differences here is, or they're not abutting, they're abutting another property, of course, but they have a wetland resource here, and this is all vegetated.
In the back?
Yes, yep.
So that back faces conservation land?
It's, it's wetlands. It's not, it's privately owned, but it, but it's wetlands. It's pond. There's a pond and there's a buffer around.
Is whatever they're going to do will affect that?
They'll need a permit from the Conservation Commission for the area that's within the wetland resource in buffers area, but they're not proposing altering it.
There's already a building there, right?
No, this isn't a building, and the board may recall, I think it was two years ago, but it might have been three, the building across the street is constructed and has all its parking area. This was a reserved lot for parking for that other property right across the street when the parking requirements were much higher. And over the years, they never needed it. It's never been used, and they came to the board to ask if they could modify that decision, the site plan review, so that they could release this lot and put it into actual production.
This really aligns, in my opinion, with development of the industrial park that we so much want to do.
Exactly.
So unless there is very serious issue, I would vote to recommend.
And I think it raises the question, too, at some point, when the board's thinking about zoning changes and amendments, is that 40-foot setback?
Yeah, I was going to ask.
Really necessary? I mean, I think our industrial park has a decent look to it. There's a lot of green space, but you can get that without a 40-foot setback that then is using up all this productive land.
I was going to ask that question because the setback on residential area is obvious why you want that, okay? For privacy, for noise, for all that. But an industrial park, you can put a setback, but you should have exceptions because it's different. So I don't know if we contemplated that in the past. I don't remember discussing the decision.
I don't think it's ever come up until this project because there hasn't been an opportunity for any real new development.
I would say, yeah, as part of what we are looking about sustainable Easton, I think it will be good to look at the details for the industrial park from the point of view of limitation and regulations that might be impeding the development there, and we need to take a look at that.
I mean, I'm, I think everyone knows I'm in full agreement on that, that I think that's an area where we can really make some headway in exactly the ways that you're talking about. I fully support that idea.
And doesn't impact the look of the town or anything, so definitely is.
Yeah, we've got, we've got the sewer now that's going to come in there soon, you know, absolutely.
It's low-hanging fruit.
Completely agree.
Yeah, I think carefully done and carefully considered is definitely, I think, the way to go.
Is that building there, is that the condos or what's the condo association connection?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't understand your question.
Somewhere in the narrative here, it was talking about this being a condo association?
It will be condo-ized, so these will be business condominium units.
Business condominiums?
Yes.
Okay, I thought it was residential. I was confused.
Yes, no, no, yeah.
Okay.
And that's, I mean, what the applicant is intending on doing is moving their office into one of these.
So you would buy that like a residential condo, only put a business in it?
Yeah, and there are lots of, several of the buildings down there, that's what they are. I think the first building on the left when you come in is one that is really just all individual units and individual businesses.
Won't be bad for someone to develop.
Okay, I was just envisioning all these condo abutters like being opposed.
If they develop buildings on the industrial park for offices, it will also be a good use of the, of the land. So people can come and maybe rent offices a lot cheaper in Easton than that in Boston.
Any motions?
Motion to?
Recommend.
Recommend. It's been a long day. Motion to recommend the variance in 40 Bristol Drive. Wolf?
Ketum, second.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Ketum?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Kid?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. No real chair updates this week. I guess the question I would have is, have we made any thought, you know, progress or headway on setting up some of the meetings that we've been talking about?
No, that is this week's primary focus.
I know you guys have had a lot going on. Well, we've already hit on the decision and plan signatures. Did you want to update us on the permitting audit?
Did we hit on the decision and plan signatures?
Did we, didn't we do them?
Oh, that wasn't what I had on. So the conversation that people were having about signing the plans, I'm coming back to, you know, like the Conservation Commission has not gone back to the Conservation Commission having to sign the individual. They still have a document on record with the Registry of Deeds authorizing the land use planner to sign on their behalf so that once the decision is approved by the board, they can get their decisions out. And I'm asking again if the board, because we did that during COVID.
Yeah.
And the board was interested in trying to set up DocuSign, which would work for the decisions themselves, but it doesn't work for the plans.
So what do we need to, I mean, it seems to me like we're all on the same page here.
You need to vote again to allow the, the planning director to sign on behalf of the board, and I will present the language that, we'll just use the same language as we did the last time, basically.
Only for decisions, not for plans?
No, that would be for plans, too.
It would be for both.
It would be for both.
Yes.
Okay.
Otherwise, you, you just, because we're not always having in-person meetings, and even when you are, I mean, if we want to try to get these decisions out faster, because again, there are all delays that slows things down.
Sure, absolutely. Good idea.
Slow the decisions by one or two weeks sometimes, right?
Or more.
Or more.
Or more.
Make it easier for the people working with us and applicants.
Motion to allow the planning director to sign on behalf of the board? Wolf? It's not that I don't love chatting with both you and Suzanne off these times, however.
Do I have a second?
Ketum, second.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Ketum?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Kid? Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. There we have it.
You just made Suzanne stay, too.
Well, that's great, and I apologize if, if you guys have mentioned this a bunch and it hadn't landed with me. I don't, I don't know why, but, yeah, good. I'm glad we got that done.
Yeah, we'll get your big stamp with all of our signatures on it.
That's right. And then I guess the last thing would be the permitting audit.
Yeah, the permitting audit. So we have a draft. I took another look at it. We refined it a bit. I want to look at the organizational structure, and I want to try to get that out to you folks by the end of the week to have, start looking at and take, just, I'd like some feedback and comments on it and take a look at it. There are a lot of really good suggestions, a lot of low-hanging fruit on how we can speed up the process itself, but he's also gone through, Wayne Feden has also gone through and looked at all the zoning and has a lot of zoning recommendations and recommendations on our rules and regulations, the administrative rules and regulations, and the subdivision handbook. So I want to make sure they're very clearly broken out because I think it can be overwhelming when you start to read through it. The first section where it's really focused on the permitting process, I, I think that's pretty straightforward. I think the rest is straightforward, but I think there's a lot there. And it's really, to implement some of those recommendations, it's going to be a real update of both of those administrative documents. And then we've been talking about the zoning. One of the things, and Bob and I have talked about it, I think we, we've talked about it, but our zoning is very difficult for people to understand, and it can be very difficult for people to find the information they're looking for easily. I get a lot of calls from folks, and I have to walk them through it. So one of the grant applications that we're submitting, hopefully we'll get it, is for a rewrite of the zoning. So in addition to the zoning amendment?
It's about time.
That would be fantastic.
It is, it is.
I can tell you, when I joined the board and I started reading that thing, I said, oh my God, it's a patchwork. When I work on the bylaws to introduce the, the solar systems, it's so convoluted. And the chapters and the locations where everything is, it doesn't lead to a logical arrangement of the all bylaws, and hence, there's a lot of things there that can be practically eliminated and not be there at all. I can tell you, I found a few of them, and that will facilitate for the applicants and for us and for everyone else, so absolutely.
And the other thing we find is that there are uses that are very common, and you're like, okay, where does this fit? So like event spaces and event venues, we don't have a nice tight category, so it's indoor and outdoor recreation. I mean, recreation's pretty broad, but I think there, you can better define that so people understand what it is.
I would agree. I think appendices are usually supplemental information, but most of the meat is in the tables in the appendix, which kind of throws you a little bit.
And you go back and forward, back and forward.
And then footnotes in the, in the. With, with critical, critical.
Really important footnotes.
Some of the important things are the footnotes.
Well, that's fantastic. So, so you expect a draft sometime later this week?
Yeah, I'll, I'll get that out by, I'm hoping by Friday I can have it out to you.
We need to get a town that has done the bylaws recently and take a look at that.
Natick has gone through, I just happen to know because I've been sitting at their town meeting, Natick has gone through a number of their bylaws, tightened it up and kind of cleaned a lot of them up, and they've been doing a few at every town meeting. Amanda Loomis is the CED director there.
Amanda Loomis?
Loomis, L-O-O-M-I-S. Do you know her? If not, I'm happy to, to email and introduce you, but, yeah, she's lovely. And I'm not just saying that because she got us a bunch of Adirondack chairs for the library lawn, but that may be a part of it.
Yeah, there's not a lot of towns that have good models. I spent some time in the Foxborough zoning bylaws this week for another reason, and very similar to ours, and I own property in Plymouth, I've been on theirs, and same kind of convoluted, you know, issues of trying to find anything.
Well, because, because it's building up. As I say, you do a bylaw, and then you add, then you add, then you patch, and you add, that's what you end up with.
I'll say, not only has she done a pretty good job of kind of untangling it, but she's doing, she does a great job at representative town meeting, explaining them each time, because usually about four or five articles are presented to kind of untangle some of it. I don't think she's done yet, but she's been doing a fantastic job with it, so.
That's good, that's good to know.
Well, there is a caveat in that, a catch, and as I say, if you're going to change, you need to make sure that it's like it was before because things exist and were approved and all that, so there is a legal issue there. You are changing the bylaws, that is the laws, and what about everyone else that have been done and now can be interpreted differently?
Well, right.
Well, I assume any, any major change like this would have to go to town meeting.
Oh, yeah.
At least one.
But I think you just, you group them up together, and you just do five or six at a time, and then as you, you kind of knock them down.
You need to address the pass and the people that were approved and all that.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, but if you see it for, especially for structural reasons, if you could identify the core ones, fix those and kind of branch out and keep kind of addressing and just, if you tell folks it's house cleaning and very clearly explain how, I think over time, you'll be able to kind of.
I'm, I'm thinking that it's kind of the, the structure of it itself really needs to be rethought.
But as you're, as you're like redoing the structure, you can also be like, hey, we don't need, we've reorganized, and now we have six things that say exactly the same thing in slightly different ways.
If you're just moving things, it's different from, okay, we moved this, we need to change the header of this.
Yeah, maybe it's a two-step process.
Call it differently.
Change, change the structure without changing the law and then clean it up.
Yeah, it's kind of like when you clean and you just put things next to things, and then you're like, how did I have nine tape dispensers? And then you can go on from there, perhaps have maybe a couple less.
Yeah.
The other, I, this is a side note, but it really goes to making it easier for people to understand and understand what the process is. I was out on Medfield's website looking for their zoning, and their organization is so perfect, and I'm pretty sure I know who the planner was at the time because she's only been gone from Medfield for a little while, but I'm going to call her and say, do you mind if we plagiarize this? Because it's really just so well organized.
If it's the same person who's, somebody from the Medfield Town Planner, I can't remember if she's still there, she came to speak at that 25-week government certificate, local government certificate class. She's fantastic. She was really, really great at explaining zoning.
Maybe she's the one that reorganized it because I know the woman that was in Medfield, and she's in Mansfield now.
Okay, and I'm not sure if this, this was beginning of the year, but she did a great job explaining zoning to a class who, like, half the people didn't understand as much, so.
Do you know if there is a software interface for applications that drive the applicant through a software in order to make their application and?
Like an instruction?
Right, like you go online and you do it online, like you do everything online now. Why, why all these applications cannot be totally done online?
Our applications?
You go one step, and if you need to approve, he has to stop there until you approve, and then, and then so on. It's, it's being done.
Well, the applications.
I don't know if it exists. It probably doesn't exist because we are so archaic, but all this can be done online.
So I think, I'd like to know exactly what you're thinking, because our applications are all online, so they submit their application.
No, you guide it through the, all the step online, all the step, up to the last step. You need to go online, log in, go into your account, whatever, and this is the application, and you have make a flow chart, you have all the things that you need to complete, guided through the online, but I don't know if it does exist.
I hate to say Natick again, I'm sorry, but they just also redid their, it might be worth taking a look. I think it's similar to Permanise and whatnot, but I know they just did a complete, we're using the same software developer, we use them for room reservations at the library, and they kind of reached, so every step of the process, if you have to get approval from somebody, it doesn't let you go forward until that person gets an email, logs in, reviews it, checks it off, and then they continue with the process, and there's steps built in for approvals at different points, if that's what you're talking about.
Yes, I'm talking about.
Yeah, then it exists, I'm pretty sure.
The online guidance for applications through the process. And even click and show ahead of time what are the steps that you need to go through, and then you go one, number two, number three, or A, B, C, or whatever that is, and you get to that step, and you, if you don't complete the things that you need to complete, you cannot go to the next one.
Now, is it so detailed where it'll actually show you, like, based on your district, you know, if you don't submit a plan with whatever, the frontage requirements or?
And these are the requirements.
So it's, it's that detailed?
Right.
You can set that up.
And it would say, well, now that you presented all this, you need to go to the board meeting. On the board meeting, you need to present, and this is what you need to do in order to present, including learn Zoom.
But how do we make sure that?
And exercise and make sure that you know how to present and present, because if you don't present, we are, you are going to, going to go to the next meeting when you are ready.
So that, that is in line with one of the recommendations that Wayne's making, which is that you kind of, you have a covenant with the applicant that basically says, we're going to review this, and you have to have everything in order, or again, we're not even going to start the clock. The clock doesn't start until you have an absolute complete application and everything has been submitted.
Yeah, and a warning, if anything is incomplete, you might delay the whole application.
Right. I'm not sure that it speeds up the permitting, I mean, it speeds it up once you get that completed, but from the applicant's perspective, and this is just one of the things I struggle with, with the recommendation, is that the, the applicant's expectation is, from the moment I open up that application, or my representative, who's usually an engineer or land surveyor, the minute they open up that application, that starts the clock ticking, regardless of how incomplete my application might be. And it's really trying to help and make sure that they do all of that upfront and get it there, so that their application is.
Because, because nothing starts ticking until you complete all this and you give me all this, and you get okay with whoever gives the okay, and only now you are okay, but by the way, you are not until the board approves, so be ready to present on the board and that, and then after that, this is the next step and all. And then after that, this is the next step and all.
Pretty, I, we use something very similar at the library and it was custom modified actually from the CED because we do room reservations where the public requested different rooms and stuff, but they have to provide, if they're a nonprofit, they have to provide a certificate to get the room rate, et cetera. And the CED was able to take what they use and modify it for our use. So I'm pretty, and they, they custom, I forget what it is, I'm blanking now, I'm sorry. It's been a very long day. But I can get you that information and again, make the introduction to the person who helped us with it. And that may work. Or just might be something as you go through Wayne's stuff to consider if it fits with, with what he recommended.
Right, well, we just upgraded our whole system
With it.
From the one that we, it takes the same program, but they had upgraded it, so it was more integrated.
Oh, nice, okay.
And there are on the, on the private sector, okay? I'm coming, I'm coming from corporations, okay?
Yep.
And my corporation, for example, Natick goes through a very difficult process of approval because we were making parts for an automotive company. And there you go. And everything from that automotive company was guided by software, step by step. And you need to complete and you don't complete, you, you don't, you get botched back and you start losing money and a lot of money. I mean, millions of dollars because you didn't complete things in time. And the parts are not going to Ford or General Motors or whoever that was. And because of that, the, the rigorous software and complete step by step was really hitting the, the mark. So that, that's my comparison. This is amateurish to, to, to give a nice word, but it's, it's not it.
Well, that's a good note to end on. I think we've got the, the recommendations that we expect to come in this week. And I think, you know, we can continue this conversation. I think it's a, it's an intriguing one. And it may very well be something that can cut down on some of the man-hours from the, from the department that we've been looking at in this very context, which I think is part of your point here. And even if it takes a little bit longer on the front end, maybe it saves everybody else some time and gives everybody clearer expectations, which I think is the thing. It's a theme that we've been talking about for years. So I think all of this makes sense. And I look forward to receiving the report.
Yeah, and, and just a reminder, this is a draft and looking for feedback.
Fair enough. All right, one final motion for the evening.
Motion to adjourn, Wolf.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, cut him.
All right.
Wolf.
Aye.
Weeks.
Aye.
Kid.
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. Thank you all. Have a great night.
Bye.